Meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Public Safety. For the record, today is Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. We have council, excuse me, Board of Safety members participating in person. For the record, Commissioner Spino, Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner Cogswell, and Commissioner McLeod are here. And it is now 6:30 PM. Before we get into the agenda, can we please stand and pledge the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, a nation under the indivisible liberty and justice.
All right, we'll go right into item number one on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner McLeod, second by Commissioner Benedetto. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody in the public wishing to address the board at this time? Want to step up to the podium?
All right. Hello, my name is Paul Reboof of Torrington, Connecticut, 218 Harvard Drive. And today, I'm here representing the Torrington Lions Club. So October 12th, the Lions Club had the privilege of three K-9 handlers and officers visiting our club to talk about their K-9 program. That's Officer Yabrowski, Officer Lux, and Officer Curtin. And our club is mostly older people, very pro law enforcement. And the officers showed up, and we wanted to get a better understanding of the whole K-9 program because it's not just dogs chasing bad people and catching bad people, but there's more to K-9 programs. The officers started off, they got there a few minutes early, and were able to communicate and integrate with all our membership. They got to meet the dogs, pet the dogs, and really get to know the officers on an individual basis. Our meeting started, and they've shared about their program. So each officer identified themselves, talked about their background, and introduced their dog, and provided us a nice overview on how each of the animals has a different function, talking about the apprehension, the opioid sniff, you know, sniffing and catching the bad people, chasing them down, then of course, the therapy dog. So the club's enthusiastic. So a member, members that would normally want to hurry up and eat were completely engaged, and the 15, 20 minutes went almost a half hour. So I wanted to really thank Torrington Police Department for having the officers come over, and I hope to be back in another, another meeting to share some other ideas and projects that the Torrington Lions Club is going to be working on. And one of the things I also want to appreciate is the partnership. So the Torrington Lions Club has been around a long time. We work very hard to make relationships and help the community. And it's not too often we find people that are also reciprocal, or reciprocate and help and help our club. And I have to say kudos to the Torrington Police Department the last few years because it could be something just like the, the auto show and absorbing that coverage. Because this last auto show had all the rain, or we would have lost money, not just broke even. So it's that kind of partnership. It's being at the car show and having the officers talk to our members and just really get to know us, and we get to know the police officers. So I'm glad for that partnership and want to show my appreciation. In the past, we've partnered with the fire department with purchasing AEDs. We've had EMS come in and do stop the bleed training. So it's a very pro first responder. When I talk about first responders, I want to take a pause, and I probably should have said this first. We think of in line, on duty desks, and we see these tragedies, police officers, fire, and EMS. Last week on Saturday, another first responder died, and that was Joyce Grace, a nurse doing home care. And it hits hard because she's our ESF8 partner, as Bill, Chief Baldwin and Deputy Emergency Manager knows. And these people provide medical services to the community. And I've had the opportunity to talk to people that work with her, and it's just as devastating as a loss that we could all see. So I just want to kind of mention her and remember her and what she contributed to this world. So thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Reboof. Still open to the public if there's anyone else from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move into item number two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from October 4th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Spino. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
For the record, an abstention goes to Commissioner Cogswell. All right, item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept Officer Kyle Rikovics and Joseph Rabino as regular members of the Torrington Police Department after successfully completing their probationary period effective October 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to award, execute, and administer the purchase of a 2024 Ford Maverick or equivalent to, from, it should be from Litchfield Ford of Litchfield, Connecticut, in the amount of $34,160, funded by the vehicle replacement account, and this is pending city council approval, as explained in the purchasing agent's letter of October 26, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Battle. Floor is open for questions.
I just have a couple of questions. If you would. Can I just ask you, I did a little research on the Maverick, and it was, is there a reason why we don't look at 2023 models?
Well, the 2023, the 2023s were no more available. The purchasing door was closed on those. That's why it's taken so long to get a hold of this one. This one here won't be ready for us until January.
Oh, so the ones that are on the lot you can't purchase?
The ones that are on the lot are two-wheel-drive hybrids, which is not suitable for his position.
There was, there was a couple that I researched had like all-wheel drive.
That's what we have, all-wheel drive coming.
And it was a, like, three 2023s available?
Well, this is going by the bid process. It's the only way we can go. And if there are reasons, the reason why a lot of vehicles dealers don't apply for this is because they have to give us cut municipality, what you would call, not the refund. They give us a cut on the vehicle by being a municipality.
Because in my research, it was, the cars were $10,000 cheaper.
Well, those have to be, were they hybrids?
No.
Well, see, if they don't bid, I can't go out and shop. So it'd be easier for me to go from lot to lot and do some shopping, but that's not how the charter works.
There's no ways around that.
I think that the only way around it is, and I'm sure that it is the case, we could ask our purchasing agent if she's inviting all of the local.
That's a fact. We have a whole list of dealerships.
Right.
And this was the only one that came back to us. That's why we say or equivalent. We can take a Chevy, we can take a GMC, but this is what comes back.
Okay, I was just curious about.
Okay.
Other questions? Follow me, let's hear.
Just following up on that, isn't there usually someone who's approved for like a state bid? You know, I know there's certain dealerships on the Chevy side that have state bid money that they're.
We went to Janus, we went to MHQ, nobody bidded.
And they're the ones for Ford that would have the state contract?
That is correct.
Is there a reason why they're not bidding, or can they make more money?
What happens is due to the, basically on this particular bid was due to the strike and everything. The window that they have for ordering vehicles has not been opened by Ford, GMC, or anybody else, probably that I know of. And then again, it's still up to them to reach out to us when we give them the invitation. And if they don't reply, there's nothing we can really do about it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Oh, and for the record, I have one abstention. Commissioner Cogswell. All right, at this point, I want to ask the Board of Safety if they would consider adding an agenda item to the agenda. That agenda item would be to discuss and potentially take action on authorizing the mayor, Chief Baldwin, and Chief Borden to exercise or utilize a state contract for acquisition of radio equipment for integration with the Connecticut Telecommunications System, the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network.
Mayor, before you go any further, I'll make a motion to add section B to the agenda.
Thank you.
Second that.
All right. So the motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Commissioner. All right. So then the motion I'm looking for is a motion contingent upon approval by the city council to authorize the mayor, Chief Baldwin, Chief Borden to utilize state contract number 19 PSX0088 with Marcus Communications and Northeastern Communications, AKA Norcom Connecticut, for the acquisition of radio equipment for integration with the Connecticut Telecommunications System, Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network, as itemized on the attached quotes. Funding for this acquisition is being provided from the ARPA funds, which have already been previously approved by the city council. There have been motion. Thank you, Commissioner Cogswell, and seconded by Commissioner Benedetto. And the floor is open for discussion or question.
We can just have a little summary about this and.
Sure. Yeah. Chief, I know that Chief Baldwin and Deputy Chief Trip have been working on this for several months. You want to talk a little bit about? Thank you.
Yeah, um, current, this all started under Chief Towie, who was looking to upgrade the Torrington Fire Department radio system. And through his expertise, he recognized that going onto the state system would have been, is going to be more feasible for the city of Torrington. Chief Trip can talk a little bit more about the fire department's acquisition, or they're looking into going into the state system for radios. When the ARPA funding became available, when we were looking at replacing our current radio system, we were obviously concerned about the funding associated with that because as some senior members of the board are aware, in past purchases for police radios, it can be pretty expensive. So in discussion with the mayor, we were able to come up with ARPA funding to fund the radio system for both the police and the fire department. The police department's radio system, so once Chief Towie started looking into going over to the state radio system, we had a conversation, and he felt that it would be wise for the entire city to go onto the state system. Our radio system, the police department's radio system is over 10 years old. It has shown signs of wear and disrepair. Some of the equipment that we are looking, we were looking for for replacement had not been available. Some of the older systems have been outdated, so they were coming up with new equipment. So we were pretty close to coming to having to replace our current radios as they are now because they're, again, because of their age. After Chief Towie had left, myself and Chief Trip had talked on occasion about what it would look like for the entire city to go over to the state system. And as a result, we started doing research, I on my end, Chief Trip on his end, to develop and to come up with different radios for our system. So we're going to be going on to the state, state, the state of Connecticut has been soliciting municipalities and agencies to come onto their system, which is, in the long run, is going to be a lot less expensive for the city. And basically, what it does is it gets us out of the radio business where we will no longer have to worry about maintenance. The state will maintain their, will maintain tower sites and any type of equipment as far as transmissions are concerned from the towers. Whereas, of course, we, as a municipality who own the radios, will have to continue to maintain those radios. But as far as the actual towers are concerned, that will be reverted over to the state of Connecticut. So it was just, as I spoke to other municipal, municipal police chiefs, other departments are now, they're, they're exploring the opportunity to go onto the state system. Many departments have left their city-owned systems and have gone on to the state system. And as, right now, we're working with the state to bring our entire radio system onto the state system as well.
Any other questions?
I just have a simple question. I'm always complaining about getting something and having to vote on it. Is there a reason we just got this, or do we need to do this right away? Or, I don't want to, I'm not trying to hold it up. I just, I'm just curious about that. Sometimes we get it, and it's a deadline that we have to meet, and something like that. And I know we've been waiting a long time to do this. And if it's just, let's do it and get it done. I'm okay with that too. But that's the question why we're looking at it now.
A couple of factors are, it has been, it is painstakingly slow, working with the state and trying to get, get us onto the system. That's the, one of the first things. The other thing is, is that we're coming up against the deadline for ARPA funding to use up the funding that had been set aside by the city council, and we have to use that by the end of the year. So we've been working on this, realistically, since Chief Towie was here, and it's been carried on by Chief Trip and myself, and recently myself. We're, Chief Trip has worked on getting the WPCA onboard, so we're going to be replacing the radios for water pollution control. And I've been working with the street department, Ray Drew and Tim Cody, to discuss their needs for radio. So they're going to be getting the new radios as well. So we're hoping the entire city will be on the state radio system. But it's been, we've been working on this for quite a while, Dave. How long would you say? And we finally got to the point where the state is now authorized, because there has, there's a whole authorization process, and the state has just now authorized the city to come onboard onto the state system. And there's still some significant steps that have to be taken as far as talk groups and radios frequencies that are going to be, that they're now upgrading on their end. So this is the time now, the, all the radio system, the radios that we're purchasing are newer model radios, they're upgraded radios, they're in, they're considered to be high-end radios for the price that we're paying. And we did, we went out to bid, we looked at different, different vendors, Norcom being one, Marcus being another. We looked at different radios. They're all part of the state system, state contract system. And we, you know, to save, from our end, to save the city money, we went with a less expensive radio that has the same quality as the top-tier radios. So this is, you know, so we're bringing it before, we've done a lot of research, we're bringing it up for the board for approval and.
I think the only thing that I would add to that also is, in the last legislative session, at the end of the legislative session, our delegation reached out to us to ask if there were any projects that we needed the state to fund. And we did request that they seek some funding for a tower that would supplement the radio system. And they did agree, the legislature took action on that. So we want to make sure that we have these, that we're all in line, not only with these, these purchases, but as that, that approval goes through the bond commission approval process, we don't want to be tripped up by you're not shovel-ready kind of thing. So there's a lot of reasons why these are ready. These quotes are only good for a window of time. I think we have a 30-day period. So for us to get this approved here and then get it to the council in time, it does feel a little rushed, but a lot of work happened to get it here.
Just to add, Firebrand's been using this system since 2020. And what it does, it gives our firing ground back to LCD to be recorded. That was our biggest issue as a prefer safety is that our recordings weren't being issued, and we're getting back to dispatch center. So we've started this process with our repeaters on our trucks. We have three trucks that have repeaters with the district to reiterize our system. So we've been operating on the state system with our radios for, for three years now. This is a full-blown, you know, we have the volunteers included in here with their mobiles to get on the 800 system as well, in this, in this quote. So that's where we are. The reason for Norcom because for us is the mobiles, and that's a repeater system with Motorola, which works with the state system really well. So we have to stay consistent with that. And our portals, we went with Kenwood, which we have now through Marcus. It's probably about half the price of a Motorola radio, which is about $9,000. With Marcus, I think with all the licensing, you're talking about $6,000.
Has, there been any talk with Trinity, you know, coming in, and some way we can figure you into that system? There's been a lot of talk about no communication between fire department and EMS.
Radios that we are getting are dual-band radios. So there are going to be opportunities where we, where we're going to be able to monitor other departments and other municipalities within our area that are not going to be on the 800 system. The dual-band radio allows us to do that. And I don't know if, I know we looked at tri-band radios, but again, when we were, tri-band is going to be a third frequency, but I believe that the cost and the expense was not worth us going to a tri-band radio. But the dual-band radios give us the ability and opportunities to communicate with other, with other agencies and other organizations. And if, if that is not an option, the one benefit that LCD provides for us is that they have the ability to patch through radio transmissions in the event that we need to contact another agency or department that is on, that they're monitoring. We have the ability to be patched through for any type of emergency type of communications.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions before I call the motion? All right. If there are no further questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. So we'll go back into the regular agenda at this point. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's report for September 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Spino. Questions or comments?
Chief, just on the parking ticket fines, I see that's going up pretty good. We're up to $406,000. Is it just collections not working? Did you go to, didn't the department go to the system where they couldn't register vehicles if they had outstanding parking tickets? Has that system been put in place?
Yes. Yes, it was just put in place a few weeks ago. So it may take a little bit of time to get processing, but I know Cheryl's been entering all the stuff, and it did transfer over. So hopefully, we'll see some benefit from that coming months.
Great, thank you.
Other questions on the report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept Fire Chief Borden's report for September 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. I heard Commissioner McLeod. Questions on the report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept EMS Provider Activity Report for September 2023.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the volunteer fire departments.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Cogswell. Questions? Oh, I see Michael Whitaker's on the line. Is there anything from the Drakeville Department this evening?
Yes, just a couple of things, Mayor. Just a couple of updates from us. We took out a Facebook ad campaign to try that out. We got a few inquiries over the last few weeks, which is good. So we're in the vetting process with a few new recruits. Right now, we have 10 active firefighters. That's both black and yellow helmets. We've got six members who are either black helmets, or they need a couple more things, and to get them back up to the black helmet certification. And we have about three other firefighters that are considering going to fire school in the spring. We have one gentleman who is in fire too, and another one who's taking the 2Q class. So we are very busy up in Drakeville. We are also going to be doing our Christmas tree burn and PR. We've set that date. That's going to be the second Saturday, January, it's January 13th. So we're looking forward to having more people up at the firehouse to see what we're doing.
Thank you. Questions for Drakeville? All right, and Torrington is not here this evening, so we'll move into item nine. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting with Chief Baldwin.
Good evening, Commissioners. We're in the process of our, continuing with our accreditation mandates. We're approaching Tier One proof review by the state. It's very painstaking, and our, the division that is a professional standards division has been working regularly on trying to maintain those standards that are mandated by the state as a result of the accreditation. The other, last week, we had candidate interviews that Commissioner McLeod was a part of. We put nine offers for nine individuals. Three did not show up. The other six were interviewed, and unfortunately, a conditional offer was not provided to any of the candidates that remained. The, we continue with recruitment efforts through social media platforms. We've also responded to Officer Buzzy, who is a part-time community resource officer, went to the Gilbert School Job Fair this past month in hopes of getting young individuals interested in the law enforcement profession. And unfortunately, we didn't get as many interests, many people interested as we wanted. And two of the interests that we did have were underage, and we're not eligible for law enforcement. Right now, we have three people that are in the academy. And again, we, you know, the hiring, retention, recruitment is a nationwide program. I was at a conference last week. The overarching theme internationally and nationally is law enforcement agencies that are having difficult times in retention and recruitment. So it's not just a Torrington issue, as everyone on this board is well aware. And as far as police work, I want to commend Officer Step. She did an excellent job this past month, where she, as part of an investigation, she was able to recover and seize a stolen gun that was stolen out of Virginia. That gun was taken off our streets. The individual was appropriately charged for that violation. Again, I want to thank Paul Reboof and the Lions Club for their kind words for members of our K-9 unit. They, they continue to do an excellent job. Officer Curtin, as you're well aware, if you met Drago at one of the meetings, he is still doing well in the K-9 Academy, expected to graduate soon. From the emergency management's perspective, I want to thank, thank my deputy EMD, Dave Trip, who took care of the EPI exercise, which is a yearly exercise that is mandated by the governor's office. This, this year's tabletop exercise was a overturned tractor-trailer incident involving a hazmat, a hazmat material. Chief Trip and his team did an excellent job, even though we had, there were some technical issues that we're going to be working on. But as, as far as the overall operation was concerned, Chief Trip didn't, again, I just want to commend him and for the great work that he did. That's all I have.
Questions for Chief Baldwin? All right, Deputy Chief.
I just want to touch base on the, on the applicants. We, a new list did come out today, or was just sent to us today, and we're going to continue to actively, we're going to get a little bit more aggressive on trying to reach out to everybody and try to get people in for interviews, even if it's, you know, only a few. Hopefully, that'll help, you know, once we hit every new list. Other than that, that's it. Oh, Pal's, Pal is having a food drive at Big Y on the 11.
Questions for the Deputy Chief?
Just a quick question. Are we, are we utilizing Army Pays or uploading any of these positions into the Army Pays portal?
So I'm, when Officer Buzzy was at Gilbert School, I also attended, and I, we were both talking with Army Pays. So when that was all set up, we had a booth right with them. They were two tables right next to each other, so that it was back and forth. If one, you know, somebody came over, the army would, would direct them to us and everything. So it's starting to work together. I don't know how in-depth we're getting with everything, but it is, we are with them on these recruitment drives.
Thank you. Chief Borden?
Just a couple of things. Just finished up this week, the language on the union contract to finally wrap up the negotiations and move forward. In the process of doing that, they, their wage increases went through, and the retro checks are just about completed. So all the facets that go with the negotiation process will be completed, so we can move forward. The shift commander district vehicle came back a couple days ago, so we're working out a few little bugs with it, but it's back in service. And then. And then, as I stated last month, we are looking to hold an entry-level test in-house, hiring a testing company to do that for us. Because of the current list that the consortium has, we've pretty much exhausted and they will not be testing again until the springtime. And our intent is to put recruits into the spring academy, which they have just opened up the application process for the academy. So we're really going to strike pretty quick to get spots reserved so that we'll be able to put our candidates in there. And it's about all ahead.
Questions for Chief Borden?
The candidates we have to send to the academy?
We're looking at four.
Four.
Yep. Might be one more hinging, but I won't know till that happens.
And I would just add those four positions, those are new. We added two in the last budget cycle and two in the current budget cycle. So those are four new positions that really just, we haven't caught up with filling them. Deputy Chief Tripp?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates, the board. Our AFG, our equipment has been purchased for our E tools. We're in the process with equipment, mounting those in the vehicle, so those will probably online. I'm hoping by end of November, we'll be full-blown E tools and we'll bring some to the board probably in December meeting. Not to show exactly what, what they are. So that's all been purchased. We've received all the funding from FEMA on that. We're in the process of our training portion of it. Our first class was our trench rescue, which was, was highly successful. Our, our second half of trench begins next week. We're up at the dump. We couldn't do this without, without DBW and Streets. They have a machine up there and they're digging trenches for us as we need them to put people, you know, put our equipment in there from the state. That's on the AFG. As Chief Baldwin alluded to the E P P I, this is a requirement that state to receive any kind of front fanning for the E M P Gs. We need to provide this or do this training. And we do this every year and it's, it's with the help of our, our community partners that always come out to this, this drill and exercise with us. Torrington Area Health, C H H, the new superintendent was there. D P W with the director, we had Streets in water pollution, EverSource representative. David Cheep, Baron was there for the PD and the director of IT. So, you know, whenever we have these drills, it's always a good discussion on, on the city and how we're going to deal with a lot of these things. So I just want to, you know, thank our, our community partners for always coming to aid of the city of Torrington with that.
Questions for the Deputy Chief? Anything from Trinity this evening? Okay, we'll move on to item number ten. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members of the board of public safety.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're open and I'll start. Somebody left. Commissioner Battle?
Oh, yes. We want to congratulate two officers for officially coming onto our department. We were happy when we walked in to hear, you know, all the good reports and all the hard work that you do. You know, we appreciate it. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah, I, I have one question for Chief Borden that wasn't in his report. And to be fair, I've already spoken to the chief about this, but I wanted to bring it up. I don't want to speak for the board, but I know that over time, we've had questions, but we've supported mutual aid everywhere. Okay? And of course, we know well in the city of Torrington that both of our volunteer departments are struggling for members and stuff, you know, everything. The last, last couple of weeks, we've gone on, or at least been asked to go on mutual aid out of town. And if you read the paper, one of the towns is having a lot of political problems with members, their leadership and stuff like that. And my question to the chief was, where does mutual aid end and we become their fire department? Because they can't get any members, okay? I mean, you're, you're, we're obviously not going to let something burn if we're called, but at some point, are we going to start charging? When you don't have the volunteer, we cover our volunteer fire departments. It's not, to me, mutual aid is not covering because you can't get members. All the people in those towns are paying fire taxes that are going to, to whatever their budget, however they work it out. Where does it start? Where do we start to have to charge towns to go for coverage, for actual coverage, not, not for a, you know, just be their fire department. Do you get what I mean? I mean, we talked about it, you know? So I'm, I'm just kind of, where do we go on that?
During our discussions, we talked about, you know, it's not a very simple answer to be able to say that because every department is different. Every department's struggles are a little bit different and the timing of when they're struggling, when they may not be struggling, goes back and forth also. So, you know, as you heard today, Drakeville is doing a good rebound right now with membership. So our hope is that our neighboring departments who are struggling are going to have success as well. And we'll be looking at this down the road, hopefully in short order where it won't be such a big issue. But to address your concerns of the going-ons with a few different departments that are around us that may be struggling with their leadership and stuff like that, I can't get into their real house. I mean, that's their department to run, that's their town and it's their politics. And that's something I believe if we continue to keep seeing patterns that we'll have to look at politically, having discussions and saying, okay, what's going on and how do we address this in the future? But it's not a, a simple answer to say that we're going to charge you or we can't say we're not going to go because we're mandated by the state to provide mutual aid to our neighbors. But of course, you know, we would help them and they try to help us the best we can. But it's something we have to continue to keep monitoring and then have those talks with those departments and say, is there anything we can do? Not responding-wise, but to help in different ways and look at all that together. But that's a much bigger picture with a lot, a lot of different players involved and just a conversation of what do we do?
And, I mean, we're starting a policy committee. Is that going to be a policy or should it? I mean, is, I don't know if that's somewhere as a border we want to go or that's your responsibility or both? You know, I mean, I don't know that we need to do it today, except but somewhere down the road, this is going to happen because it's not going to change. I mean, it's national. It's, I'm not throwing people around here under the bus. It's everywhere, you know?
And Chief, I just have a question. Is there, I've been dealing with this for a lot of years now. Is there a chance we could put four of our volunteers together from Drakeville and Torre for, to let them respond to mutual aid? Because that's who we receive. We receive volunteers from Winston, Litchfield, Van, Harrington. So why couldn't we send them volunteers? Why do we have to send them career guys? Or do we have a special?
No, there, there's no what services we provide or, you know, how that comes from the city of Torrington for the aid. There's no, nothing dictating exactly what that is, but as you know, both of our volunteer departments have been struggling with their membership. So not very long ago, I want to say early spring or something like that, one of our neighboring departments had called one of our volunteer departments three times on the radio before they were able to even respond with two people because they just don't have the membership. So one of the things is, is, you know, they can't keep waiting. They're asking for help because they need it fairly immediate. So to solve that problem in the interim is just call the city. We'll go. But by all means, if we, you know, start seeing our numbers go back up with the volunteers, that's definitely something that I would prefer to see.
Because I've known in the past, we've waited for Winston because they didn't have enough guys to send us. We'd have to go to Harrington. So I was just wondering if we could put a group of four people together to respond to mutually.
Yeah, it, it's, it's very difficult to compare the two services. I mean, you know, the city of Torrington is a career department. We're here twenty-four, seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year. So obviously we can respond immediately. When it comes to volunteers coming into Torrington or whatever else, we can't fault them for delay coming in or whatever it may be. Because on average, you're looking at a fifteen to twenty-minute response for departments to be able to respond into Torrington or anywhere mutually because they have to stop what they're doing, go to a firehouse, get the gear on, get on a truck and then respond the distance that it takes to get there where, you know, again, a career department is a different beast altogether because we're right there.
No, and I understand that. I'm just trying to give them what they give us.
I, I understand where you're going with that, but it's, you know, it's one of those things. You don't really juggle that. It's just when they need it, they need it. They're not calling us every week or anything like that. If it was that, that was the case, then we'd have to have.
Yeah, we look at the pattern, see how it goes.
Did you have other, you're all set?
Right.
Commissioner Cogswell?
Just one question, actually for you, Mayor. You may bring it up, but the Yankee Pedler, obviously there was some good news there from a standpoint of actually moving, but public safety wise, the first part of that is the fire suppression system?
Yes.
If they don't do that by the date, is there a quick remedy or do we go back to court for a protracted process?
No, there's a.
The reason I ask that, just this has taken so long. It's an issue from a public safety standpoint. And if they don't do it, I would hope that we can do something rather quickly that moves us along.
Yeah, that was the, you know, we're grateful. The judge on this case recognized the urgency of fire alarm, fire suppression. So they have until December twelfth to get that system in and that system is not only just we, they, they tell us that it's in, it actually has to be inspected by our fire marshal and building inspector and approved. If that doesn't happen, receivership then would be awarded to the Torrington Development Corporation and the Torrington Development Corporation can step in and get that fire suppression system installed.
But that's a pretty quick process. I, not being able to read the decision, I just, I worry that all of a sudden it turns into another protracted legal.
No, no, no additional hearings are required. The, the decision was they have until December twelfth. And if it doesn't happen, the receivership would be awarded. So it doesn't require any additional hearings about whether or not it should, it should occur. I think the judge would only need to know that the inspections did not occur or it was not approved by the, by the city of Torrington. So, but even with that fire alarm, it's not so much a fire suppression, it's a fire alarm system. I think, and I'm, I'm looking at the chief and the deputy chief there, it certainly doesn't change the way that we would respond to a fire at that location. And I'll let you finish that statement if.
Yeah, a detection system is just what it is. It detects the possibility of a, a fire in the building. We would respond like we would today, which is a defensive operation and we're not going to take any risks to get inside that building other than if we know there's a life inside because it's, the building's got holes in the floor, it's got a lot of structural damage, et cetera. It's a very unsafe building to be in, especially under fire conditions. With a suppression system, it's a little bit different because that's designed to keep fires in check, keep them small in nature and things like that. Not necessarily always putting them out like you would read in Hollywood movies and things like that. But they're meant to keep fires small and so they don't spread and things like that till we can get there. Because what happens with a suppression system that's tied into an alarm as well with that detection, so it alerts us and we would respond in there. But barring any kind of thing like that, we're not looking at any kind of offensive operations in that building.
No, and that makes sense and nor should we be risking anyone. But I guess I read that wrong, so it's just detection, not a suppression system.
Uh, the mayor would have to loot that. I'm not.
I think there's some suppression in like the commercial spaces. There is some suppression. But the, the larger part of the building, all of the rooms and what's been gutted, that would just be alarm. And obviously, you know, the concern is because of the proximity of that building to other buildings located downtown, you know, early warning that there may be an incident occurring gives us that, you know, that opportunity to jump on how to save those other buildings. So the building is, it's still dangerous, even with a fire alarm system in it, it is still a dangerous building.
And as it's getting colder, it's fairly well-secured at this point, to the best of our knowledge, or?
Yes, so our blight enforcement officer, Fire Marshal Becetta and Sergeant Baldis check that building on a regular basis. You know, anytime there's, and the neighbors are, you know, are pretty quick to inform us if a door is open or they see something suspicious around the building. All eyes are on this property. There's no question about that.
Well, thank you. I know this is something you've worked really hard on and to both the inside and outside council should be commended for this work. And hopefully this means the progress of moving forward on that. But just from a public safety standpoint, it's always been a concern and
Very big concern.
If there's no action on that first hurdle, then I want to see something happen pretty quickly.
Yes.
Okay.
We agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benedetto?
I just have two things. Chief Baldwin, the Torrington Company, I've noticed people coming out that door on East Elm Street or North Elm Street. It's been open in the morning and I've seen two people come in and out of that. So is there, is that supposed to be checked or changed? You know, that one on the double door right past the gas station on the left? So I don't know if they're sleeping in there or what they're doing in there, but that door is.
This is news to us, Commissioner, so it's something that we can have our patrols.
Just address, I don't, who's taking the building down?
So is the, on North Street, Torrington Company?
On North Elm Street, yeah, you know, the double door there.
On North Elm, okay.
Right past the gas station.
Yeah, I can certainly, well, yeah, if you want to take a look at it and I can contact the property owner, IRG, so that they can double-check.
And a question, I don't know if it's for you, Chief. By Planet Fitness in the movie theater, people have been asking what's going on there? Is that traffic or is that for the city? I don't know where I would ask that question. They rerouted. It's a glen.
Have you, yeah.
Have you been all right at a movie theater?
I have.
Farley, it's Farley Place. It's, it's that intersection and that strange turn. Yeah.
It's very colorful. It's all red. Painted bright red, yes.
The issue was with trailer trucks making that turn from Route four coming cut through, they have to come into the other lane to make that turn. If somebody's sitting at that stop sign, it's hard for them to turn. It's good that there's a lane going into Planet Fitness, but making that right-hand turn off Route four, coming in that ring, cut through.
I know it's awful narrow. I think Sergeant Baldis would be the best one to answer it. I know he was working with the state and we had a drone up to overview the whole thing and lay it out. So he would be the best one to, to actually explain that whole process.
And our city engineer, our city engineer has actually done the design and to the deputy chief's point, Sergeant Baldis has been working very closely with Mr. Cousins to make sure that those, those trucks can navigate through there. I believe he also had the fire department go out there and test so that the fire trucks can navigate through those, those bollards that are up, those are temporary, you know, and the reason that the engineering and traffic division wanted to use this paint and these bollards is just to get an idea of how necking that intersection down to accommodate the anticipated increase of traffic. You know, with the potential reuse, reuse of the former Asian gardens. And then there's the other small cake building there. They know with the reuse of those and the increase of potential recreation uses with the trail that goes from North Elm Street down to North Main Street. So a lot of, a lot of design work is happening with that. Testing the waters, painting the road before you put up a curb. You know, is it a mountable curb so that if a truck is making a right-hand turn and it's not getting around there? There's still a lot of data being collected before that becomes permanent. Right now, that is still the, the beta test as to how this would really look.
Another concern is snowplows.
Snow, they tested everything. Yeah. At least that's what I was told, that they were testing the trucks, the fire department's apparatus went through. The plow trucks went through. It, it should accommodate all of that. And again, you know, that's with bollards up. I think everybody is looking at the bollards as if those are a permanent fixture. Those would not be the permanent fixture. It's how do you then, after you collect all that data and make the determination, decide how you're going to build the road? So.
And it's going to be like that all winter? I mean, how long is this?
That, and I think that's why they chose red, I think. I know at the last minute, they were questioning whether they should use red, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why they chose red, but I, when I buy it, Dustin explained it, it was bright red and they were going to see how it all worked out.
That's it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I just want to let, no, the trunk and treat was a good event on Friday night on the kids. Officers did well down there. K nine was there, the new K nine, and he was introducing his dog to the little kids. So it was a nice event. Thank you.
Commissioner McElroy? Commissioner Spino?
I don't have anything.
All right, there's no further business before the bar. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.